Now, it should be relatively quick. I guess it's pretty much good evening now. Good evening. If you all just both state your name for the record. It's got a couple of questions. There's no testimony, so just state your name for the record.
Okay. Anne Fedulon, Director of Planning and Development.
Alan Greenberger, Chairman of the Art Commission.
Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Fedulon, we've had some brief conversations. So, one of the things that we were quite proud of, we did a charter change ordinance a little while ago, and it's now time to actually implement that. And it's Greenberg, I want to thank you for your support. It actually started in the last administration. Folks, could you all, could you all hold it down a little bit over there? Thank you. The, so we're at the implementation phase, and one of the, it's like three divisions within that, and one of them was called the Developer Services Division. And it's a little beyond just the name because we want to make sure that that particular unit also addresses the concerns of any residents that happen to be in a community where there's significant development. One of the things that we've always found is, a new development goes up, regardless of the size, there's always an impact, sometimes a negative impact on the local community. Dumpsters on the sidewalk, no proper signage, people have to walk down the middle of the street, the whole area. So, we always wanted to have a location, a place where people can call, and a place where individuals, and not just developers, but somebody wants to get a deck. The issue is, do I have to go to four different locations? Do I have to go to license inspection and get a permit there? Then I have to go to historical and get whatever sign off I had to get there? And then, do I have to go to zoning to see if it's zoning? And we always want to have a one-stop shop. So, can you tell me where we are in terms of the implementation phase as relates to that particular?
Sure. Well, the permitting function still primarily resides with the Department of Licensing and Inspections. And they're in the process of putting together something they call the Eclipse system, which would allow a developer or anybody who want to apply for a permit, they could submit online, and then the various departments that have to review the plans could have access to it electronically. I talked to Commissioner Perry, Ellen I., and he tells me that that portion of the Eclipse, excuse me, Eclipse system is still about a year away. So, what he and I are going to do in the interim, along with some of his staff, and John Monlack, our Deputy Director for Developer Services, is meet and figure out how we can come up with some sort of interim solution until that gets set up so that there would be one location where a developer or applicant could come to submit their plan so they wouldn't have to go to all the different locations.
All right. So, the Eclipse system would do exactly what?
So, what it would allow is for essentially online permitting and review. So, you would be able to submit your plan online and then track it through the system. So, rather than have to go to, you know, for example, the process right now is, you have to get a certain number of prerequisite sign offs. Maybe you have to go to the Planning Commission, depending on what you're doing. And then you may have to go to the Streets Department, and you may have to go down to Water at 1101 Market. Rather than do all that, you would submit your plans online. The different agencies, Historic Commission, Planning Commission, Wire Department, Ellen I., Streets Department, could review the plan online and sign off, and everybody would be looking at the same plan and this, and one set of comments based on the different agencies so that the developer wouldn't have to go around to all the different entities.
All right. So, a person who wants to simply put a deck on the rear of their house and may not have the sophistication or to wear with all the hire consultants or whatever, how would they be able to interact with that particular system? Because they may not be able to submit their plan, or would the contractor submit the plan? I'm just trying to, I understand how it would work with a developer.
So, the plan submission requirement would not change? So, whatever plans you have to submit in paper format, or whatever piece of paper you have to take to Ellen I. right now, you would provide the same documentation? It would just, you would provide it online, or probably be a form that you have to complete? You probably would need some mechanism to scan in whatever it is you're talking about. If you're talking about sort of a, just a scale drawing, that's probably a simple process. If you have to have full-blown architecture drawings, that usually, most architecture firms nowadays have the ability to just submit things online and transmit documents.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, the deck. I'm trying, because in all honesty, it's more important to accommodate the smaller person, the single-family homeowner.
Right.
Because they have, you know, I mean, the big developers, they can, it's no problem, it's a no-brainer. All right. So, as you're concluding that process, and please tell them to get that done in a much quicker timeframe.
Understood.
I'm not even going to tell anybody that we're a year away, given when we actually introduced the ordinance and the voters voted to get that in place. And in the meantime, you will have some sort of, you're talking to Ellen I. Commissioner, his support to figure out a way so we can have a permitting process in a single location.
Right. Yes.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Mr. Greenberger, so I'm going to go through a little semi-dog and pony show. So, a few, three, four years ago, you know, actually, you know what? It was actually longer than that. So, we put together this strategy. We wanted to get into municipal marketing because we were having fiscal challenges. And my theme was always, you know, we need to figure out a way to get revenue for the city. And the first response to that need should not be sticking our hands in the taxpayers' pockets because frankly, it's not easy, but we can do it. You know, we had a bunch of people here ticked off at us yesterday from the soda industry, and they were quite upset, you know. We had to make tough decisions. So, we always try to figure out a way to raise revenue. And we looked at some models, and you know, you may remember this document. It's dated a long time ago. Can you get it? This municipal marketing, I'm proud of that little thing, you know. We put it together, and it just had all the different locations where these municipalities across the country raise all kinds of revenue with marketing. Now, there's some people out here who don't like billboards, they don't, they don't like signage, digital, static, whatever, right? You know, but the reality is, in the city of Philadelphia, like every other city, there is some sort of advertisement, i.e. billboards. We had SEPTA in here yesterday, they have a $150 million contract to provide advertisement, and they're making a lot of money. I'm glad they had that because I can only imagine what the fares would be if they didn't have that, right? So, we looked at that, and we went through a long, arduous process in first determining the legality associated with the buildings. And I'm telling you a lot of what you know because you were, you were around when this was going on. I'm just trying to lay it out for those who aren't. And frankly, process took too long. I got a little angry in here a couple of times, you know, lost my cool, which I should not have done, but it is what it is. But we finally got the legislation passed and finally got it authorized. And we were moving through a process, then the whole procurement process started. We put out RFQs, RFPs, and that took a long, long time. And again, I say this ordinance is dated, it was introduced December 15, 2011. That's a long time ago. But then we get to a point where we're actually ready. We selected a contractor and provider, and we, they, we went back and forth, I believe, you know, I don't know what division, but they made them make several changes. And then they came up with a proposal to do a static sign, not a digital sign, not some big voluminous lighted sign to place on a couple of our municipal buildings. Then they go to the Art Commission, and they walk away. And it's not clear to me to this day if they were denied, if there clearly wasn't approved. So, I just needed you to tell me what is going on with that because the reality was that that contract for, I believe, two signs? Two static signs? It's two?
Four.
Four? On two buildings, it was on two buildings?
Yeah, three on one and maybe one or two on the other, I can't remember.
All right. And, well, it wasn't five. All right.
Then it must have been four.
All right. And it was for like a half a million dollars a year. Now, that's a nice little piece of change for a couple of signs. So, what happened? I mean, after all of that process, the Art Commission, I understand that apparently they have the right to basically tell the mayor, council people, all the other people that were involved in this that doesn't really matter what you said, we're not approving it. Can you tell me what's going on with that?
Sure.
Are we at a fiscal position where we can turn down $500,000 a year?
Sure. I'll be happy to. Let me just tell you exactly what happened first, since that's what you asked first. They, I think the firm's name is, is it Interstate? I think it's Interstate.
Interstate?
That's all right. I get mixed up between Interstate and the intersection, they were doing bus shelters. Interstate came to me and asked for a meeting with me just to say, we're ready to make a presentation, want to show you what we've got, and get some advice. So, I had a meeting with them, and to be honest, the material that they had prepared at that point was really not up to any kind of quality grade. And I told them flat out at that meeting, you've got to do a better presentation than this because I just, I know that this won't get through Art Commission as you're showing it to me. It was sloppy, it was unprofessional, it was, it was just not done to a level.
When you say sloppy enough, I don't mean to cut it, but I just want to get clarity.
Yeah, I'll give you an example.
Was it sloppy, what does that mean?
They showed a picture of the building, and they photoshopped on a, an image of a billboard, in essence, you know, a scrim that was not to scale. It did not align with anything on the building. It hadn't been designed, basically. It was just, they took an image, they shoved it on the photograph they took of the building, and it was, it was completely lower quality than what we always see at Art Commission from presentation. So, I said, you got to fix that.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. Was the process that led up to them coming to the Art Commission?
No, they had not, they had-
They didn't have to go to anybody else yet?
They hadn't, as far as I know, at least in terms of the Art Commission, they hadn't gone to anybody else. This is my first contact with them.
All right. I ask that because it was a procurement process, and they were selected.
Yeah.
You're telling me that nobody-
I'm, when I was Deputy Mayor, and when I wasn't Deputy Mayor, I was totally unaware of what this process was, of this process unfolding. Wish I had been aware of it because I would have asked them to come sooner. But, so this is my first encounter with both the subject and, and their particular proposal.
All right. I hate the question, yeah, I just want to make sure.
No, no, that's okay.
So, are you saying that you're not aware if there was a process that led up to the ultimate meeting?
Yes.
That the procurement process didn't-
That's right. I was personally unaware of how public property has put this together. I can't speak for anybody else, but I was unaware of it.
Okay.
So, I told them this, they said, okay. They were very respectful, and they said, we'll fix our presentation. And I told them, I'm not making guarantees about what's going to happen. I'm just telling you that if you come in with what you got, right now, it's a problem. So, they fixed their presentation, they did a pretty respectable presentation. They had gotten things, I gave them, tried to give them some advice on how to align the proposed images with things in the building, you know? Make it look like it was designed. They came in, they presented to the commission members. I would say probably with the exception of the commission member who represented public properties, the commissioners were unanimously opposed to it, and they were prepared to vote against it.
And why were they opposed to it?
I think they felt that it just did not, well, for, there are two reasons. The, one of them was things that were visible from the parkway was, was presented a big problem to the commissioners, and I-
Is that a, is there something that says that you can't have a sign that's visible from the parkway?
I'm, I'm not aware of what the law says on it, but I know that there's been controversy over the years about even small signs like the Franklin Institute's little electronic sign they have at 20th and Parkway.
That was on the parkway.
Yeah. And the library-
I'm just saying, you got to, I mean, you guys make decisions, you got to stay within the bounds of your-
I understand. And I was very, and I was-
So, they didn't like the fact that it could be seen from the parkway?
Right. And I, and, I'm sorry. And I was, I was very concerned about that. I told them that that was likely to be an issue, and it indeed was. I hadn't talked to any other commissioners about it. So, that was one thing. And I think the other thing was that it was, commissioners were having a very hard time, and the conversation was all over the map about didn't look right on the building, to didn't like advertising on the building, to didn't like certain details of how they were doing it, covering up windows that people would have to live behind on a permanent basis.
You said covering up windows? You said you couldn't see through the sign?
You could see through it, but it's like, you've been on buses that have, you know, these scrims on them. It's sort of like looking through sunglasses. It's like that, I think. So, the, the reasons were all over the place. So, they took, they were ready to take an initial vote, and they were ready to vote. There was a motion made to disapprove, period. And I said, look, it seems to me that if you're going to disapprove, you ought to at least invite them back to make another proposal, to come up with some other set of ideas. And I had mentioned to them some other ideas. In fact, it's even, I'm glad you gave me this book because a lot of them are right here. I said, why don't you think about kiosks on the plaza, on the sidewalk? Or think about smaller eye-level panels that might exist around the building? I'm not blaming them, they, the idea was never interesting to them, and I can't explain why you'd have to ask them.
Well, maybe because they responded to an RFP that said, on the building. I mean, you guys have gone way beyond, and I'm just saying, the things that you've just told me, I don't know of any code that says that that, that's prohibited. And if it was, I don't know why all of the people preceding your meeting would have allowed that process to-
It, it's not a matter of it being illegal. It's a matter of, the Art Commission is there to make these aesthetic judgments. That's what the law says, and that's what they felt they were doing. I wanted them to at least come back with other ideas. And so, the motion was made, it was seconded, they voted. It was a, it was a tie, four to four, and I broke the tie to allow them to come back, invite them back to come in with another, with other proposals.
A proposal that would not have advertisement on a building that would have it on a sidewalk? That would not be consistent with the request for a proposal?
A proposal to advertise in a different way. We, we don't want to be in the business of telling people what to do. But I, I, you know, I don't know what else to do.
The bill was passed, right? We went through a process, there was an RFP, they were selected, right? And then, your people are saying, well, none of that matters. I'm going to go outside of my jurisdiction because I don't think you should be able to see it from the parkway, which is not in the code. I don't, I don't agree with municipal advertisement, right? Which the law was passed to allow that.
I agree.
So, I'm trying to understand, how does this commission, despite all of these things that happened leading up to that, just essentially make a decision to disallow something based on something that's not within their jurisdiction?
I, I understand your frustration, and I was concerned about it going in. I knew this would be a sensitive subject. I asked the Law Department, what is our authority in this? And it wasn't, and it wasn't what was explained to me, and I went back after I talked to you about it afterwards. I went back to them and asked them again. And I, and what they explained to me is that as it was state, as it was presented to us, the Art Commission had the authority to approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove. That was what was explained to me, and I wanted that to be crystal clear to commissioners because I knew that this was going to be a sensitive subject, and I wanted to get this right in terms of running the process correctly. So, that's what I did. I can't, I can't speak to, you know, what, what each individual commissioner believes. They believe what they believe. In terms of, but, but I was, it was clear-
Alan.
It was clear to me that this was in their file.
Your members went outside, if they told me that, if you said that the design was not consistent with something, then, okay, that's kind of like, but to say that we don't want it to be able to be seen from the parkway? Or to say that we fundamentally don't agree with advertisement on municipal buildings when a law was passed and signed by the mayor?
I don't think they said that. They did say, they did say that-
That's what you just said.
They, no, they did say that they, that there was a problem of the visibility on the parkway. There had been no major signs allowed on the parkway to date, and these would have been the first ones. And there was concerns about commercial advertising on the parkway.
That's not what you said, Alan. You said it's visible from the parkway.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to explain that it was visible from the parkway, and people were concerned about it, yeah. As far as against municipal advertising, no.
So, the FMC tower is visible from the parkway, right?
Sorry, the what?
The FMC tower, that big red light up there with FMC on top of that building. That's extremely visible for-
I think when people talk about-
Why is that okay?
I think when people talk about visible from the parkway, they mean being on the parkway and looking down that particular slot of space.
Now, there's no way you can stand on the parkway and not see the FMC tower.
Of course. I mean, there's a city around it.
So, why is that okay?
Because there's a city around the parkway, you can't avoid that.
Why is the Blue Cross sign okay?
I agree.
If you can see from the parkway.
You can see all kinds of stuff from the parkway, but none of it is on the parkway. And, and-
So, 1515, you're saying that's on the parkway?
Yeah. It's right there at the head of the parkway.
Okay.
And, and MS, you know, and same thing with MSB, it's all, it's all adjacent-
You think the MSB is on the parkway?
It's adjacent to the parkway. If you look at what defines the parkway, those buildings are adjacent to it.
You're stretching the rules. So, the MSB is on the parkway? You believe that?
I do.
And what is this based on?
It's based on there's a definition of what the parkway includes in Fairmont Park that stretches all the way through Love Park.
I'll give you Love Park. The MSB is not on the parkway. The MSB's address is on JFK Boulevard.
This is what I believe, that it's on the parkway.
All right. So, you, again, you go beyond-
And anyway, they, they backed off and didn't have things that were facing, the thing on 1515 is visible from the parkway. The stuff on MSB, they backed off, and it was not visible from the parkway. They had things on the other side. So, that was not, those were not a parkway issue.
So, these commissions could just make up the rules, basically? Because there's no rule to say-
They, they are there to decide on the aesthetics. And so, yes, I mean, I hate telling you this, but I-
So, what does the aesthetics mean, the sign, not whether or not it's visible, right? That's just my interpretation. If somebody paints a picture, and if you say, I don't like the way the picture looks, then that's fine, right? That's within the bounds. But if you say, well, I don't like the fact that I can see the picture, how is that within the-
If, 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 first of all, I regret that I, that we didn't know anything about this coming in from public property. This was the first any, that anybody had seen it from the commission, I wish they had talked to us before.
With the exception of you.
Well, and it was only-
Because you kind of like worked on this.
And it was only, it was only once they had applied to commission and they were ready to come before us. But nobody had come to us before that to say, here's an idea we're pushing forward. You know, we know it has to go before commission, let's start having a conversation about this.
Yeah, but they followed the rules.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you keep talking about what they did, they followed the rules. We passed the law, we did a procurement process that was extremely limpy, and they responded to our procurement process. I mean, how are you going to blame them for doing that?
And I'm not blaming them, I just wish they had come. But, that all left aside, you know, I believe that the commission was following the law. That's why I checked with the Law Department several times because I wanted to make sure that we were within the law. And when, and after it was, after the first round where they came to us, I met with them again, and I brought up again, how about different ideas? This book is full of them, about different ideas. And most of them, by the way, are not on buildings, they're on kiosks, they're on street furniture, you know? Nice things in here that I think would be pretty, pretty good ideas that could make money for the city and for them.
Well, there was a proposal to put, what's the thing called? Experiential, you know what I'm talking about? One at MSB Plaza.
I know, I remember that one.
And they were, the government at the time said, well, we don't like that. And I think you were in that decision.
I was.
So, I mean, you're just being so inconsistent. So, you're now saying that they should have put it on the sidewalk when something was presented to you?
I'm, I'm saying that-
MSB Plaza, you shot it down.
I'm saying that scale of the, of the thing matters. SEPTA came to us with all those television monitors that they put over subway entrances?
Yeah.
And it, it was, it was controversial, and there were people from the public who were against it. But I, in the end, we worked with SEPTA to make a better-looking structure to hold those up, and it was passed. I think scale, scale of these things matters.
What else about the scale?
Those television sets, I think, are perfectly fine. I don't have any problem with them at all. And I think the scale of these kiosks, which you do see in other cities, there's a whole bunch of them in here, from Boston to San Francisco, good cities. I've seen these things personally. I think the scale is perfect.
So, kiosk came before the Art Commission, and I know you can only speak for yourself, that that's something that you will be comfortable with?
I would be interested in it. And I think, and I think there's a way to do multiple ones of those. We'll still, listen, believe me, I know we'll get pushed back from some quarters, but personally, I think those will be fine.
All right. So, it appears to me that the Art Commission has made a decision not based on what I believe to be their jurisdiction because you're talking about the aesthetics, right? But made a decision because you can see it, which doesn't necessarily deal with the aesthetics, made a decision that you don't, from a policy perspective, believe that advertisement should be on public building? Which was the law, and still the law, till somebody repeals it.
Right. And if the, if the law had said, well, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I shouldn't get into a legal argument about it.
No, that's okay.
We're, we're perfectly happy to have them come back with other proposals.
But they can't do that, you know? The procurement was for signage on three, two or three select buildings. They can't now come back because it would have to be another procurement process, right?
Well, but, yeah, but, I mean, it's done all the time. And, and the law allows the commission to make these kind of judgment calls. I don't know what else to tell you.
On the aesthetics, you know, not on whether or not it should be there.
Um, aesthetics involve being there or not being there. The commission in the past has denied approvals to other proposals.
So, our law, the law that we passed is not relevant, is what you're telling me?
Well, I'm not talking about advertising, but-
But you're talking about the law, the law says that you can do it.
The law says that advertising on public buildings is legal now, come in with proposals. It doesn't say that building, it doesn't say do it this way. Now, the RFP did, the RFP, the RFP did-
The RFP was done based on the law.
Well, the law, the law established the legality for it, and the RFP established that they wanted it this way. I agree with all, all that. And the commission, as far as I can determine from the Law Department, had the ability to say yes, no, or something in between. And we invited them to come back. I've met with them another time, they were all very respectful meetings. I don't know what else to do. I can't, if, if, if the Law Department wants to tell me that the law is different, that our limit, that there is a different limitation of our scope, I'm happy to tell that to commissioners and say that you have to live within that. But that's not what they've told me. So, I don't, I don't know what else to do. I can't, I don't know what else to do, truly. I'm happy to work with them, I'm happy to work with you or with public property, but give me a scope that I can, that, that either confines what we do, or it is what it is.
Well, you know, I don't have a problem with the Art Commission. I just want you to stay within the jurisdiction of your responsibility and not tell me that if a law is passed and you say, well, I disagree with the law, so I don't have to do it.
But they didn't-
And that's what they did.
Well, no, they didn't. They disagreed with that proposal.
You said, you just said that people said that they don't believe with advertising on publicly-owned buildings.
It came up, well, it came up certainly from the-
All right, within that, that's not within the jurisdiction, it's determined that.
I don't remember which commissioner said what. There were certainly people at that meeting, from the public, who said that. I can't remember which commissioner said what. I'm just telling you, those feelings were floating around in the room.
I'm only repeating what you said. All right.
I don't know what else to tell you. I'm sorry. I wish I could be more helpful, I truly do.
I saw, I'm just needed to have this public conversation, you know? Because you guys make these decisions, I don't know who was in the room, whatever. You know, you just basically disregarded all of the work that was done, starting with 2011, and, you know, turned out $500,000 that could have gone to the school district, you know? After a day of hearings in here. Matter of fact, there's a bill pending that all municipal advertising revenue should go to the school district, you know?
I, I appreciate that, I would invite them back.
Coming up, final passage tomorrow, I'm being told.
I'd be happy if, to work with public property and come back with a different RFP that would, that would make this work. These things can make money. They really can. I mean, the little thing out on Dilworth Plaza does, does well.
$150 million SEPTA has a contract in place.
Yeah. And, you know, and SEPTA's got a lot of rolling stock in all kinds of other places, and, and the Art Commission worked with SEPTA.
We have a lot of rolling stock too, you know?
And the Art Commission worked with SEPTA.
The rolling stock that goes out every street in the city of Philadelphia. And if you look in that document, you'll see one of them. I think probably on the front page.
Listen, for-
It's called, called this trash truck, right?